Sorry YouTube, so that anybody who was not allowed to get in can go ahead and listen to the recording. Alright, so here's how our format is gonna work. What we're, we've given you some time over the last few days to submit questions and so we've got, we've got about 30 questions that have been submitted which we will answer. In addition to that, myself along with the principals, will give you information in regards to what the hybrid in-person learning program will look like, as well as what you can expect from the full-time distance learning if you have chosen to remain in that program. So what we'll do is each of us will give you some information, we'll share what the campuses are going to look like and what you can expect to experience. And then we'll go through all of the questions, we'll try to get them answered. And so in order to give us the opportunity to share our reopening plans, as well as answer those questions that were submitted, we're gonna keep the chat off. You will remain muted and as you can see, there is no chat. If you have questions, I would encourage you to jot them down. And then once we've completed the presentations and we've gone through all the questions that was, that were submitted, what we're gonna do is then reopen the chat. And if you have questions at that time, you can go ahead and submit them and we will get to as many as we can. We're gonna try to keep the time to 60 minutes, just an hour, so that we can share the information, give you an opportunity to answer your questions or get your questions answered, I should say, and then we will try to finish by 6:00 PM. So if you, like I say, if you have questions along the way, jot them down. When we are done presenting all the information and answering the questions that were submitted, we will open up the chat. Alright, so with that, we'll go ahead and get started. Let's see here. So we have a presentation. And before we get started, I'm gonna ask Carissa or Joe, maybe if somebody could let Kathy Bozo know that we're gonna post the information. Looks like she got, she got locked out.
Yeah, you can text her.
Okay, thank you. Alright, so what we're gonna do is we're gonna go through some slides. So what, what does the hybrid model in grades TK through sixth grade look like? We are focusing on TK through sixth grade. As, as you know, our case rates are still, they're under 25, but they are not at the, at the red tier yet. So we're still in the purple tier, which makes grades TK through six eligible for reopening, but not the middle school yet. The middle school has to wait until the red tier. So the information will, you'll hear information about seventh and eighth a little, a little later in the presentation, but we will focus on TK to six. So just a little bit of terminology before we start. You will hear us refer to stable groups. There's been a lot of different terminology that's been thrown around over the last several months. Stable groups is what your child's hybrid in-person learning groups will be referred to as. So a stable group is a group of no more than 16 people total in a classroom, which includes any adults, teachers, instructional aides. So this will define your child's classroom environment. They will, they will be in a stable group that will attend on either Tuesday and Thursday or a stable group that attends on Wednesday and Friday, so two days a week. You'll hear the terms tier assignment, which you have no doubtedly, undoubtedly heard on the news lately. Tier assignment is what the schools use for where we fall into that tier structure. If you look on the county's website, you'll see the adjusted case rate for tier assignment. That's the number that our county uses to assign us. So under 25 puts us into the purple tier, which allows TK through sixth grade to return. When that case rate or adjusted case rate falls below seven, we will enter the red tier and that's the tier that we need to be in, in our county to allow grades seven through 12 to return. Monterey County as of yesterday is at 18.4. It does continue to drop and so we are, the county is, is planning, preparing to be in the red tier probably within the next few weeks. So that's just something to keep an eye on as you continue to monitor those, those, that data. You're also gonna hear us talk about synchronous and asynchronous instruction, which you have heard along the way over the last, almost the last year now. But just to be clear and just to reiterate that, synchronous instruction is the work that your child does with their teacher, live and in person or via Zoom. So right now you have synchronous instruction in the morning, followed by your, your check-ins in the afternoon and then there's asynchronous instruction when they do their assignments that have been posted online. Next slide, Joe. Alright, so for the hybrid model that is our in-person instructional model that we're talking about implementing beginning in March, we will follow an alternating day schedule that will go Tuesday through Friday. Mondays will be dedicated for distant, to distance learning and then teachers will have opportunities to do collaborative time, meet together, do some planning for the rest of that day. So your Mondays will look just like they look on every day right now. And then, then Group A, that stable group, Group A will attend on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Group B, if you're assigned to Group B, will attend on Wednesdays and Fridays. Many of you or several of you have indicated that you're waiting until tonight's meeting to return your surveys indicating your preference. Please, 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 if we can just really implore you to return those surveys tomorrow, that will help us to determine our class groups if we need to make any adjustments to the current groupings. So as we said, we'll be in small stable groups, no greater than 16 people and that's any combination of students and adults. We will focus on, on what we're calling the big three and that's those safety and mitigation strategies outlined by the CDC and the California Department of Public Health. That's mask wearing, physical distancing and hand washing. So mask wearing, for those of you who have been inquiring, mask wearing is mandatory at all times on campus and on school buses. When students are having snacks, they'll be allowed obviously to remove their masks, but that's it. Any other time, masks are required. We will maintain appropriate physical distancing between students at a minimum of six feet and you'll hear information from all the principals and get a little snapshot of what the classrooms are gonna look like. In addition, we're gonna have activity zones on the playground. So because of health and safety recommendations, our play structures will have to remain closed and classes will not be allowed, those stable groups will not be allowed to mix on the playground. So we'll have activity zones and structured time for, for breaks, for kids to go outside and, and have some movement and, and the ability to run around a little bit. But we will not be able to share equipment or supplies. And our Time For Me program has not yet reopened. So we are, we are hopeful to be able to do that, but at this time, there is no Time For Me program. Okay, so mark your calendars. What we're planning for is to have a couple of orientation days. So on March 18th, we'll bring Group A in for an orientation that will allow the students to be able to see the campus, to meet the, to meet their teachers in person, to see what their classrooms looked like, go over some of the safety protocols, pick up their PPE that we'll be providing and, and just see how things are gonna go. Group B's orientation will be on March 19th. So we can expect that those will be shortened days. We don't know the timeframe quite yet, but those will be shortened days of instruction to give everyone the opportunity to just sort of get the lay of the land. For parents, it will be an opportunity to see what pickup and, and drop-off look like, where students will be able to enter the building and exit the building and, and just get the kind of the protocols in place. As I said before, Mondays will be dedicated to distance learning and some of you have asked about scheduling siblings. As we have done all the way along, siblings will be grouped together, so they'll be attending on the same days. Okay, some safety protocols that we have in place that we will expect of everyone. We have a health screening app on Parent Square. So we will ask you to complete that health screening prior to sending your child to school. Your child's teacher will be able to see their class list and they'll be able to see and, and confirm who has completed the health screening. Any child who comes to school and has not completed the health screening will, will not be allowed to enter the classroom. They'll be sent to the office where they will have to complete the health screening with one of our district employees. If you go on, you'll be able to see the health screening. It's whether, you know, it's confirming that your child doesn't have a temperature. You haven't been around anybody who's positive for COVID. You don't have any symptoms that would be indicative of possibly needing to, to go to the doctor and get a test. We will practice good hygiene and best practices based on recommendations, as I said, of CDPH and the CDC. Frequent hand washing. We have, so we have hand washing stations in all of the classrooms and we have hand sanitizing stations in the classrooms. Different grade levels will have separate ingress and egress, so they'll have different entrances and exits. And then for PPE, for your child, the district will provide two disposable and two reusable masks as well as one lanyard, so that we're not dropping and losing masks. If you would like to send a face mask from home, obviously we've been in this environment for a year. We've all gotten used to wearing face masks. Please feel free, we would encourage you to have as many masks on hand as possible, especially for our kids. We know that they're gonna lose them, they're gonna forget them. Hopefully the lanyards will help with some of that, but as many masks as you can have on hand, we encourage it. We will have disposable masks on hand for damage, loss and kids maybe that just forgot it and need a mask for the day. Okay, so at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Mrs. Adeza and she's gonna give you a snapshot of what life will look like in hybrid education at Toro Park School. So go ahead, Mrs. Adeza.
Thank you, Mrs. Uchelli. This is really exciting. We've been working on this and talking about this for quite some time. So it's exciting to be here in this moment. So as we all know, drop-off and pickup at Toro Park School is kind of cumbersome in the mornings and the afternoons. So we're looking at a staggered start. Primarily the TK students are the ones who are going to be affected with that. So our transitional kinders will enter and exit from the front of the kindergarten building. And then there will be two kindergarten teachers with classes on campus and each of those teachers will use a different gate. So for example, a teacher could use the small gate by the office and the other teacher could use the gate by the music, the music building down by the staff parking. The first grade team will be utilizing the gate over by the deaf and hard of hearing building. For those of you who've participated in Time For Me before, that's the gate that you would walk to Time For Me. So that will be the designated first grade gate. The second grade gate will be the area by the lunch patio, which was traditionally our welcome to school and exiting from school gate. So that will be our second grade spot. And our third grade team will be utilizing the gate down by the blacktop at the end of the teacher parking lot. So that's a big shift. We don't typically go down there ever, but we do need space and that is the perfect place for our third grade team to, to meet their kids. Okay, Mr. Carnazo. How could a day look in kindergarten and transitional kindergarten? As I mentioned, transitional kinder would have a staggered start from the other grades and we would have, thank you to parents, obviously, first off, for filling out that health screening piece on our Parent Square app. That will allow us to get the kids in much quicker and be able to do our visible, our visual screening and welcome of them in that short amount of time. So transitional kinders will actually arrive to campus at 8:10. So their welcome time is 8:10 to 8:20 to get into their classroom with their instruction beginning at 8:20. They would then have a snack break built in and outdoor patio play. So the TK class would be confined to their little patio area and their dismissal will be at 11:40. Our kindergarten student would be coming in at 8:00 to 8:10. Again, thank you for filling out the health app in advance, allowing us to do the visual screening as the kids come into the classroom, allowing us to start school right at 8:10. And then we would go ahead and have the snack break and a movement break built into their day with a dismissal at 11:30. And what happens after the in-person group leaves? There would be large group via Zoom check-in with the cohort that's working from home. There could be small group via Zoom. There could be office hours held and there could also be parent conferences during that time. Okay, Mr. Carnazo, next slide. Our first through third grades, again, would be the eight o'clock to 8:10 screening and welcome with 8:10 instruction beginning. Something that's different with our first through third grade in this model is that there is not the before-school playing on the playground. Students, once the gates open at 8:10, or I'm sorry, at eight o'clock, would go directly to their classroom and remain in their group, in their classroom. There is no playground before school. And 8:10 is when our instruction would begin. Then school-wide, we would have our outdoor movement breaks would be between 9:45 and roughly 10:45. Each grade level would have a designated time to be down on the blacktop and the field and the play area. And as you can see, it's, rough idea is that first grade would be 9:45 to 10 o'clock. 10 o'clock to 10:15 would be second grade. 10:15 to 10:30 would be third grade. And the staff and I have been working out a way for students to walk around the campus where they wouldn't cross. So students who are going down would go one way and students who are coming up would go another way. So all of those logistics are, are in the works and being discussed. Then the kids are back in after their designated movement break time and they, for another learning block of time, and then they would be dismissed at 12 o'clock. So dismissal because of the numbers of kids that were having leave at that time. Again, although everyone is leaving at a separate time, I'm planning for about a 15-minute window of time for dismissal. And then what will happen when, when the in-person group leaves? Our teachers will have their lunch period and then starting at around 12:45, they will begin checking in with the cohort that's been working from home to meet that daily live interaction. And again, that could be small group, large group, office hours and parent conferences could also happen at that time period. And then their preparation period is built into that timeframe as well. Next slide. And we talked about how a classroom is going to work. So we're doing our best to maintain the learning environment that the kids know. So a little bit different in that all of our extraneous materials and supplies are going to be removed from the classes. There will be student desks and as you can see, there are two desks next to each other. Only one student would use a pod at a time. So Cohort A, I'm sorry, Group A would have their designated seat and then Group B would be in the seat that wasn't used on the alternating day. So think of a checkerboard and that is how we would separate the kids physically and while still providing somewhere for them to put their materials, because we're not sharing materials and supplies, everyone would have what they need within their desk. And that would be grades kindergarten through third. So I put mission accomplished because it took a lot to figure out how are we going to fit our bodies in there and still be able to have our own personal things and, and we can make it work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Adeza. I'll take over from here for Washington Union School. So we have a lot of similar structures in place as Toro Park does, but I do want to make it clear in our, one of our previous plans, we had initially talked about the fourth grade students being at Toro Park School and the fifth grade students being at San Benansio. But we are looking at and planning on reopening Washington School for our fourth and fifth grade students. So similar on the arrival piece, we will have parents wait in cars. We're working on setting up our parking lot so that we can get buses into the parking lot. Since we won't have as many, we will have space to have one or two buses and then create sort of a separate lane for parents to drive through as well. We'll have different ingress and egress points. Fourth grade will come in on the west side of the building at the parent drop-off area. And fifth grade will go up near the office, but not through the office corridor. And then that allows for our buses to come in through the center breezeway that leads down to the playground. So we'll have those three locations. It will be a lot easier and faster to get the students into class because you guys have been wonderful and completed your health screening before arriving to school. And we noticed that in our initial plan, we had some overlapping start times and screening times at the different sites. So now with Washington Union, we are having our arrival and screening from 8:10 to 8:20. While they are at school, Monday will be business as usual and then our two groups will alternate on the two days, the Tuesday, Thursday day and the Wednesday, Friday day. And we'll break it up, or break up our learning blocks like this. So depending on the grade level, they have different subjects so that we can provide supplemental supports for students, students, excuse me, during language arts and math. So that learning block of time will either be dedicated for language arts or math with other subject areas and activities interspersed to make that time go smoothly for the students. And then we will have our movement and snack break from 10:15 to 10:30. We have a large enough playground and a small enough number of students on the playground that we are going to slowly work up to having all of them on the playground together during this time. But while we're getting used to it and going through our orientation, since our fourth graders will be new to the campus, we're gonna start with, with some staggered times to, to build up to that. After the break will be our second learning block with the dismissal at 12:25. We left a 20-minute window in here to get through the dismissal because it does take a little bit longer to get to and from Washington. So we wanted to build that time in just in case. And then after the teacher lunch break, it would be check-in with our at-home learners and then running some small groups and running support for students as well with the prep time at the end of the day. Mr. Carnazo. And the students, if I, I'm sorry, if I didn't say, would leave through the same points in which they came in. So this is how a typical classroom will be laid out at Washington Union School. So instead of pushing the desks next to each other as they are at Toro Park, since our desks are a little bit bigger, we have spaced them out this way in the classroom. So moving as much extra stuff out of the classroom as possible, all front-facing, so that on a given day, next slide please, you can see that only the A students will show up. So this gives them plenty of space in between each other and away from the teacher. So all of the rooms have been set up in that manner and that is what will happen at Washington Union School.
Okay, alright, thank you, Ms. Brandt. Okay, so San Benansio, kind of in an interesting situation here where we will only be bringing sixth grade back until we get into the red tier. So Gina described the guidelines from the state that tell us why we can't bring seventh and eighth grade back. I'm excited to get sixth grade back and I'm gonna be thrilled when we get seventh and eighth grade back. So looking forward to it. So a little bit about our schedule here. Like both the other principals talked about, we will have separate ingress and egress to our, our campus. And I'll talk a little bit, I'll talk about sixth grade specifically right now. Sixth grade is, is, works out pretty nicely because for those of you who know our San Benansio campus, the sixth grade rooms are right on the outside by the parking lot. So it'll be quite easy for students to line up and come into their room right off the parking lot. So the arrival time to school will be 8:20 to 8:30. If anybody's been to San Benansio in the morning, there's often students who show up there at about 7:30, 7:40 and, and we usually kind of allow them to hang around and, and as long as they're within visual of the, of the front of the campus. However, that, that can't happen anymore. The, you know, kind of loitering in that area is, is something that can't happen with guidelines the way they are. So we need to make sure that students do not leave their vehicles, leave parent vehicles until 8:20. And at 8:20 will allow students to start coming into their campus, coming onto the campus and going into their classroom to get the day started with their teacher. So our schedule at San Benansio for, for those parents who are currently sixth grade looks very similar to how it is during distance learning. During distance learning, we split the trimester into two. We have trimester, right now we're in 2B, but we're about to enter trimester 3A. And then on April 19th will be the student's first day of trimester 3B. Okay, so remember trimester 3A will, will consist of periods one, three and five. And then in 3B, it will consist of two, four and six. So we're going to continue to keep the three-class model instead of our normal traditional six-class model. Okay, so we're gonna have the same amount of learning time as we do online that we do in person. Notice that each period is one hour in length, the same that it is now during distance learning. However, there's a shortened break time in between the classes and a longer 10-minute break there in the middle where everybody can take a break from their classes. Okay, so that break will consist of spreading our students out all through the three basketball courts that we have on our campus to make sure that we're appropriately distanced. Similar to what we have now, the students will go home during the teacher lunch and then there will be office hours from 12:30 to 1:30 and then we have our one-to-one RTI time from 1:30 to 2:30. So very similar to what, what we do now in distance learning. Not much is going to change. We're just going to have students in the classroom with the teacher. Now I have the, the asterisk there that says Zoom and in-person learning will take place concurrently. Okay, so to keep our consistency and keep our continuum of instruction moving, we will have Zoom, the students will be on Zoom at the same time that the students are in the classroom and the teacher will be teaching to both our online students as well as the in-person students at the same time. Okay, so that's something that we're gonna continue to do to make sure our students are taken care of. Okay, you'll notice this slide is a carbon copy of the one before. The schedule will be the same for seventh and eighth grade, but you'll notice that in red it says we cannot return until we enter the red tier. So once our county dips below seven, then we'll be able to bring our seventh and eighth graders back onto campus and they will be able to come as soon as we can get them on and as soon as everybody is ready to go. So same slide, same time period, same information. Not much changing from distance learning with San Benansio classes. Okay, very similar graphic to the one that Ms. Brandt showed here. We have front-facing desks. We'll have one desk six feet apart. Okay, each of those desks will be cleaned and sanitized as students cycle through them. Okay, so we'll be keeping our distance and following those guidelines. You can see it's appropriately spaced from the teacher desk as well. And that's all we have for San Benansio.
Okay, so transportation. We are working on a transportation plan. In order to ensure everyone's safety, our buses will have limited ridership and limited stops. So in the current environment, we, we have asked you, normally we're encouraging as many people as possible to use our, our district transportation to eliminate some of the congestion in the parking lot. In this environment, we're asking you to please consider using our transportation when it's absolutely necessary for your family. So here's what our buses will look like. What we're, what we're working on is a refined schedule so that we try to limit the number of different grade levels of students that enter and exit the buses so that we try to keep at least school groups pretty, pretty consistent. We have three large buses that have the high seat backs. So using the, the high seat backs as a barrier, we will be able to load those buses with one student in every seat sitting at the window, at the window seat. So students will be horizontally six feet apart and then they'll have the seat back as the barrier. So we'll be able to load about 27 students on, on each of those three larger buses. Then we have three smaller buses that have a little less capacity and have the lowered seat backs. So on those buses, because we don't have as great a barrier separating the students, we don't have the ability to provide as much physical distancing. So those students will be also on the window seats, but will, will have to alternate seats as well, so that we keep as much physical distance as possible. In addition, masks, as I said, will be required and there will be hand sanitizer at the entrance to the bus so that kids sanitize their hands before they get on. And there will be hand sanitizer at the entrance to the bus so that kids sanitize their hands before they get on. The buses will be sanitized, cleaned and sanitized every day um in between bus runs and to to maintain health and safe, health and safety recommendations. Um, so here's some of our, you know, again, some of our safety protocols for the buses. When students are waiting at the bus stop, if as a parent you are driving your student to the bus, we're gonna ask that they remain in the car while they're waiting for the bus um in order to maintain the the safest and healthiest environment. If your child leaves the house and is walking to the bus stop, we're gonna talk to them and and encourage them, require them to the extent that we can to maintain six feet of distance between themselves and other students waiting for the bus. Masks will be required, hands will be sanitized upon entering the bus. Siblings will be allowed to sit together on a bus seat. Otherwise, we'll use physically distant seating, as I just explained. Buses will be loaded from back to front so that there is not crossing of students. No food or drinks at all on the buses. And and if we find, if we have a situation, I don't expect that, but if we do have a situation where uh students are not following the safety protocols outlined, then they may lose their bus riding privileges. We'll certainly work with families to ensure that we're sending all those messages home and and making sure that everybody understands them. But those are the, those are sort of the guidelines we'll be working under for transportation. Um, we've had a few questions before we get to the questions that's that have been submitted about um funding and and how we're using. Uh, some of you have seen the state website that says uh how much money school districts are receiving. Um, so what I've done is I've put together a list of the funds that that have provided some of that coronavirus funding to our district. And then there's I'll sort of show you how we've spent that money to date. So um the first fund is is known as ESER, which stands for Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief. Our district was allocated thirty one thousand six hundred and fifty dollars for that fund. There was also the Governor's Emergency Education Relief Fund, which we received forty thousand and twenty one dollars. Uh, the biggest pot of money that we received was the coronavirus relief fund, which we received two hundred and twenty seven thousand one hundred and sixty one dollars. Then we received another fourteen thousand nine hundred and fifty seven dollars in COVID response funds, sixty three thousand and three dollars from the State Learning Loss Mitigation Fund, um, of which we currently have ninety six thousand six hundred and eighty dollars available for spending. The rest of that amount has been allocated. So what we've done is we've sort of broken it out into categories so you can see just how we've spent it. So to address learning loss through the implementation of of a variety of learning supports, we've spent forty one thousand one hundred and thirteen dollars and eighteen cents. In order to provide additional instructional supports or materials, uh, we have spent thirty four thousand nine hundred and ninety four dollars and twenty cents. Devices, additional Chromebooks, connectivity, which could be hotspots um or replacement devices for in class and distance learning. We've spent a total of ninety four thousand nine hundred and thirteen dollars and eighty nine cents. Um, to provide health counseling or mental health services to date, we have spent five thousand five hundred and twenty seven dollars and fifty cents. Um, for professional development, um, I think in this one it was to uh we added an additional uh tech support person uh this year, so uh if teachers or parents have issues, we have an additional support provider that can provide um assistance, training, education for teachers or parents. So that's been an additional fifteen hundred dollars so far. PPE and sanitization, so that's the biggest, the biggest chunk of our expenditures right now. We've spent almost a hundred thousand dollars. Um, that is everything from um how we have moved um some of the custodial payroll because our our custodians are also bus drivers, but because there's no busing right now, some of the expenditures have been moved around so that we're paying our custodians uh full time as full time custodians. Um, and not paying them as bus drivers was just just a little accounting um change um to PPE that we've ordered. Uh, our hand sanitizer units, we've done some some refitting of classrooms to make sure that we have hand washing stations that are appropriate for our kids. We purchased step stools so that kids can stand up and fit their hands into the sink and reach the paper towel dispensers. Um, so all of those supplies, uh, we've got a mister to clean our buses and to sanitize the bus seats at the end of every day. Um, so all of those, anything that goes into PPE or sanitization uh goes into that that pot of money. And then other expenditures um uh that would, you know, uh, that would apply as any any differentiation um that doesn't have to do with any of these four little uh five large pots of money um has gone into there, so that's an additional thirty five hundred. So to date, what we have spent or encumbered, meaning we have, you know, dedicated to spend on certain things is about is two hundred and eighty one thousand five hundred and twenty dollars. Of that, as I said, we have ninety six thousand six hundred and six hundred and eighty dollars remaining. Um, ESER, uh, the the one I spoke to in the previous slide has around two of funding coming out. So we have been um set to be allocated a hundred and six, an additional hundred and sixty two thousand four hundred and fifty one dollars. And then the gear fund, the Governor's Emergency Relief Fund um has not yet been allocated, but there will be a second round of funding for that. So we will continue to look at how we are supporting our students and our teachers and our families um to be able to make this reopening possible and and to maintain a a safe and healthy environment, whether it's on the buses, in the classrooms, um, providing um additional support for learning loss, um, additional support in the classroom for for students to make sure that they're meeting their academic goals. Um, so that's just a a really quick snapshot on funding. Okay, so what we're gonna get to now is we're gonna get to the questions that were submitted. Um, I will go ahead and read through them. As I said, if you have questions along the way, jot them down. If we have time when we finish, uh, we'll open up the chat for for a few additional questions. So we're gonna start with the first question. Um, a lot of these have been answered through the presentation, but I want to make sure that that I give everybody their due who has submitted questions. So first question, how will stable groups be selected? And does it mean that they will alternate days? In addition, how would a child's teacher change? And are some teachers teaching hybrid and some staying in distance learning? So I've asked uh Mrs. Adesa and Mrs. Brandt to answer that one.
Well, I'll start us off with number one. Our stable groups are being selected based on alpha alphabet order. So um, that's why it's so important we get those survey results back so we know who's coming so we can make sure that our classes are balanced and our groupings are balanced. And yes, they will alternate days. Group A will come on Tuesday and Thursday, and Group B will come on Wednesday and Friday with everyone learning at home on Mondays. Ms. Brandt, you wanna take the next?
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Adesa. What, uh, the next question says, how would a child's teacher change? Um, the child's teacher changes if they have made a change from the beginning of the school year from hybrid to shift into distance as we have dedicated distance learning teachers. Um, additionally, at Washington Union, since we have a smaller number of students, we have one teacher who will be providing distance learning for our fourth and fifth grade students and one teacher um who will be providing in person learning for those for the remaining students from those groups of students. Um, so that would cause the change again if the family went from hybrid into distance as we would need to move the students with the difference, distance teacher, excuse me. Um, and so we've got one teacher at our fifth grade level who will be doing a hybrid convo and one teacher at our fourth grade level who will be doing a distance combo. Um, but those are the only circumstances under which teachers should change.
Okay, and then um, to answer the third question, are some teachers teaching hybrid and some staying in distance learning? Yes, uh, Whitney just explained how it's gonna look at Washington at Toro. Uh, we have one teacher at each grade level, kindergarten through third grade, who will be dedicated to full time distance learning. All right, next question. Um, this one, can principals give an overview of how the day will go? So we have, we have gone through that. And and then there's a specifically, will cohort A and B always be learning the same material simultaneously from the teacher, whether in person or at home? Or will the learning be asynchronous? Mr. Carnazo, you wanna answer that?
Yeah, so that one's gonna look a little bit different from K five just from uh to six through eight. So at the K five level, um, students will be meeting with their teacher during the first learning block and they're gonna be focusing on core instruction at that time. Um, and the students at home will be working on their asynchronous work. Um, and then the teacher will turn around uh the second time period and check in with the students that were in the home block. Um, at six through eight, the students will be in class simultaneously um with the other students. So this, the students that are synchronous learning online will be learning at the same time as the students who are in the classroom. When they are off, all students are off, right? So it's not, we're not switching cohorts at six through eight like they are in K five.
Great, thank you. Uh, the next question had to do with masks, uh, the, what is the mask mandate? Um, so again, we covered it earlier, but masks will be required at all times on buses and on campus uh unless the the only exception would be if the student is eating. Okay, next question. Given that vaccine clinical trials have not started for kids under twelve and that younger children may not be able to receive a vaccine until perhaps twenty twenty two, will online instruction continue to be available in our district until all ages are eligible for a vaccine? Um, that is a great question, and we're trying to get the answer to that. Because we are a public school, once we return to full person, full in person instruction um and we can load our classes at their regular, normal levels, um, because we're a public school that's dedicated to in person instruction, normally, the answer to that question would be no, we would not be able to continue some sort of a an online component. Because we're in the environment we're in, um, and and the expectations coming out of CDC and coming out of our state leaders are that kids will not have been vaccinated by the time we we return to school in the fall, it is likely that we will be able to offer that, but I cannot promise it. And I, you know, I can't make a promise that I can't keep. So we're waiting to hear what what that information is as, and we'll get more information as we move a little further down the road. So um, we're hoping that that we'll be able to offer something of that nature or that we'll have everybody vaccinated, be able to return to full in person instruction, and it will be a non issue. Um, next one, I'm gonna ask Whitney to answer. How will online instruction work once the hybrid options open? Will students of several grades share a teacher?
So at um, on Mondays for all students, we will still have our distance learning, our online learning program that we've had for this school year, and that will continue for all grades. And then in the hybrid model at Toro Park School, they, the students will not um, students of several grades will not share a teacher. They will have their dedicated distance learning teacher assigned to them. And at fourth and fifth grade, there will be one distance learning teacher who will have a four or five group of students working from home, and there will be one teacher who will have a four or five group working in person. And those will be the only ones that are sharing, the only grades that are sharing.
Okay, thank you. Next question, will the before and after school program open once the hybrid schedule opens? Specifically asking for the kindergartners. This is Adesa.
Yes, unfortunately, our time for me after school care program is currently closed and will remain closed for the remainder of the school year.
Okay. Next one. Um, would it be possible to consider kids returning to school after spring break? It seems like a lot of stress for teachers and unproductive to get kids back in school for a week, then have them be off for a week. Mr. Carnazo?
Um, yeah, so there is a sense of urgency to open our doors. Um, and the reason behind that is if our county does dip back to the threshold where we are unable to open, we can't open. So it's important that we open our doors because once they're open, they can remain open. Um, so we we'd like to get them open with a sense of urgency.
And next question, can you please clarify how the at home cohort learning will work? Will this be a non-interactive Zoom format in which the kids can listen to the in-class lesson? And the afternoon session will be interactive with questions? Or will the in-class sessions basically be the same content for the two different cohorts?
I will take that one, Mrs. Uchelli.
Thank you.
Um, at Toro Park School, our intent is to have the kids receive their lesson in person so that when they're at home working independently, they have already been front loaded with the knowledge that they'll need to be able to complete the work prior to the uh, the afternoon check in with their teacher. Um, additionally, I am working with our instructional aids to try and figure out a way to incorporate them into supporting our at home students. So the the answer is, we're working on it. Um, and hopefully, there's, there's more supports available, and we don't just have kids working by themselves all day until that um, almost two o'clock time period. Or I'm sorry, one o'clock time period.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, easy question. If we are in the red tier by March eighteenth, are you prepared to have seventh and eighth grade back with K six? In short, yes, absolutely. When we get into the red tier, we will reopen the middle school so that we can bring back our seventh and eighth graders. Okay, next question, or I'll, I'll give this a set of questions. Are the sixth graders going to school two or four days a week? Has our plan been approved by the state? If not, when will we know by? Mr. Carnazo?
Yeah, so sixth graders will be, if you choose the in-person hybrid option, they will be going two days per week. Remember, our schedule is Monday all distance, all students are on Zoom for distance learning. Then we'll have a cohort that goes to school on Tuesday and Thursday and a cohort that goes to school on Wednesday and Friday. So it is two days per week in person if you choose that option. Um, the second question, has our plan been approved by the state? It has been submitted, um, and we have a turnaround time of seven days. So we uh hope to know here within the next week. And that was the next question, we'll, we'll hopefully know within a week.
Great, thank you. Uh, next question, I have one child at Toro Park and one at Washington Union. The arrival and screening times overlap, so I am wondering how drop off will work and what will be the process? Also, I don't see a dismissal time for fourth and fifth grade on the slide in the hybrid model, please advise. And when will we see a schedule for the at home learning days when the kids do not attend in person?
I'll go ahead and take those. We have um changed our um arrival and screening time at Washington Union so that it now and um just to make sure that all three have different arrival and screening times so that there won't be overlap for parents. The dismissal time for fourth and fifth grade will be twelve twenty five with a twenty minute window in between um to help get all of the students off campus safely. And uh, we are working with our teachers on the schedule for the at home learning days. The planning piece is crucial, so once we know who is in which cohort and how all of those pieces will look, we'll be able to better build a schedule. Um, but that's a work in progress, and we're hoping to have that as soon as possible.
Great, thank you. Okay. Will kids have the same teacher and classmates in the hybrid model as they currently have now? And what happens to the kids who remain fully remote learning? Will they be integrated into the remote portion of the program for kids on the hybrid model? Will their teachers and classmates change?
Uh, yeah, so we can take these individuals, a few questions here. So um, yeah, uh, most of the time, I I know Ms. Brandt talked about it, that most of the time the the teacher will remain the same unless your learning plan choice has changed, then that would potentially change your teacher at the K five level. Uh, at K six, we, they, all the teachers will remain the same. Uh, whether you're, whether you're in distance or in hybrid in person. Uh, and the next part of that question was um talking about the kids who remain fully remote. Um, at the, at the six, eight level, they will be integrated into the classroom. As I mentioned before, Zoom will run concurrently with an in-class cohort. And at the K five level, there will be core instruction during uh the in-person time and then asynchronous work for the at home kids who will have check ins from their teacher on a daily basis.
Okay, what is the notification process for a confirmed COVID nineteen exposure?
Okay, so that one, we will be using our Parent Square notification system um to let the cohort know that there is a to let the cohort know that there is a confirmed COVID-19 case. And at that time, that cohort would need to quarantine for 14 days if there is a case. If I am correct, is that correct, Mrs. Uchelli?
That is correct. Yes. Okay, and then how about the notification process for a potential exposure? For example, someone who may have come in contact with a confirmed COVID-19 case but has no symptoms and no test.
So on that one, it's gonna be a little bit different protocol. If a student was in contact with somebody that did have COVID-19, then we would work through our contract, contact tracing, sorry, steps to figure out what the situation was and we would have the student test before return to school.
Great, okay. This next question, why are kids having snacks inside when outdoor consumption is not only the norm but was part of the general safety guidelines for so long? That simple answer is they will not be eating indoors. In our initial plan, initially, several months ago, when recommendations were coming out, it was keep all the kids in one place for their snacks so that they're not mingling and crossing groups outside. Obviously, that guidance has changed, so kids will be eating outside. And then some food allergies can be triggered when eating in an enclosed environment. Are these kids expected to stay home? No, your kids will be able to come to school even if they have allergies. Nut allergies are the biggies and a major concern. They will be eating outside, so you know, work with your teacher if you have specific concerns. But please know that they'll be eating outside. Okay, next one. Will all classrooms across all grade levels that return to in-person instruction on school grounds have the actual assigned teacher present with the children and teaching live physically in front of them? I have heard of other districts across California that have the students back on campus, but the students are all on their computers zooming together with the teacher not physically in the classroom with them. Classrooms are staffed by aides. Can you describe what the classroom experience will be at WUSD schools? And if it will be as pre-COVID with teacher present? Or if students will be zooming together with the teacher off-site?
Okay, I think I, I think I kinda got the gist of that question. So the answer is that the, for the in-person cohort, there will be a teacher present in the classroom. We don't plan on having any instructional aids provide staffing and the teacher be at home. That's not the plan. If there's a, if there's a teacher situation that comes up, then we'll, we'll have to discuss that with that teacher. But the plan is to have all teachers in their classroom, teaching in front of the kids.
Thank you. Okay, Whitney, how will traffic be dealt with at Washington Union School with pickups and drop-off? Since you don't want many people using the bus system?
So we are working on keeping our front parking lot cleared out, finding alternate parking for the staff. We talked about that today at our planning meeting so that we can have a, an area for the buses to come in and a way for parents who have fifth graders to come and get them to the fifth grade side of the school. For fourth grade, it won't be an issue because they'll be coming through the regular parent pickup and drop-off that we use in a given school year.
And then I, you know, I think, I think it's important to remember in a hybrid environment, the number of students on campus is so greatly reduced. So it's not gonna be that normal influx of 160 parents all arriving at the same time and trying to get cars in and out of the parking lot and trying to get buses loaded. We're gonna have a greatly reduced number, probably, what did we say about? On any given day on your campus will be a
I think around 60 to 70, max.
So it's important to kind of keep that, that in mind as well. Okay, next question, since kids will only be on campus for two days a week, what will be the focus when kids are there? Will time be spent on, for art lessons and music?
So our focus for the in-person instruction day will be on core subjects. We want to make sure that while we've got that opportunity to be in person with the students, that we are focusing on the, the core subjects of instruction. And then the art and music lessons will remain virtually.
Great, and will supplies be shared among students? Will individual desks have barriers or be arranged in a certain way in the classroom?
So students will not be able to share supplies. They will need to have their own things and it will be confined to their own work area. And then we all spent some time talking about the different layouts of the classroom at Toro Park versus Washington and San Benicio, allowing for that physical distancing within the classroom.
Great, thank you. Okay, so it is almost six o'clock and I said we would try to be done by six. We haven't opened up the chat. We do know that the meeting was very well attended and I'm thrilled that so many people wanted to come to this meeting. So we have recorded it. We are gonna post it to YouTube, the full recording with all of the questions being answered. So we're gonna go about another 15 minutes, we'll give it, we'll give it until 6:15. I'm gonna have Mr. Carnazo open up the chat. The other thing that we'll consider after this meeting, we'll meet as an administrative team. If we need to, we can do a rerun tomorrow to allow some of the people that were not allowed to attend tonight back in. We'll have to livestream it because, you know, we want to make sure we have room. But we will, we'll have to run that consideration and look at everybody's calendars to make a determination on that. But we will for sure post the, the recording of this meeting.
Okay, all right, Mrs. Uchelli, let's get right to business. And this might be a question for Mrs. Deza. Will speech therapy remain in virtual or in person?
We are currently looking at all of the numbers and how we would be able to serve all the kids without intermixing groups. And at this time, the most logical piece seems that we would have speech therapy remain in the virtual environment. But there's always room for change and trying to, to figure out everything. And like I said, we're still waiting to receive who's actually coming in person and who's remaining in hybrid, which will help determine how that schedule's going to work.
Okay, great, this is a question for me. Will sixth graders wear PE clothes? And the answer to that is no. At this point, we're not gonna be using locker rooms for, for changing. Next question, just curious why it took so long to get them on campus? It was a full month.
I can take that. You know, this has been a long and involved process. We've been obviously far too long in distance learning. It's been a year, we're heading into a year. However, this is a really involved process that has been one that we have had to undertake with great care and, and requires us to have the ability to not just work with our parents. We know that your kids are desperate to return to school, to see their teachers and to be face-to-face and be on their campuses. But we still don't have, you know, everything in place that we want to have in place. So we're, we're doing our best to get everything ready to make sure that our campuses are safe for everyone to return to in-person instruction. And we feel like we're there now. We've got all of our PPE in place, we've got all of our campuses ready to go. Our teachers have been amazing in working with us to make sure that we have our MOUs in place and, and we're ready to go. So while it seems like it's been a long time, we're actually kind of at the front of the pack right now in terms of our local public schools. And, and if we can get this done and get you guys back in school by the 18th, we'll be one of the first of our local public schools. So we know it's not ideal and we know there's gonna be challenges along the way, but we're, we're all working as hard as we can to try and get this done.
Okay, all right, thank you. Next question, how soon after we hit red will seventh and eighth grade be in person? I can take that. If it's before the March 18th date, I would, I would plan on having the seventh and eighth graders just join the sixth, K through sixth group and get them in at that time. I hope that's the case, but if it's not, generally, tier assignments are announced on Tuesday. And then I would assume that at that point, Mrs. Uchelli, we would probably return, start the process the next week where we have Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday as teacher prep days and shortened classes. And then we will do Thursday, Friday orientation for the kids and we'll start our new week on Monday and then we start the Tuesday, Thursday. So about a week after announcement, we would, we would get them back. Okay. What will seventh and eighth grade class switches, how they work? We will have, we're in the process right now of creating one-way hallways using floor stickers throughout our campus. So students will have staggered release times from periods and they will move from classroom to classroom as a group and staggered. And remember, they're cohorts. So in a normal environment, if anybody's seen the chaos of, of when the bell rings, you have all your kids scattering to, you know, 15 different classrooms. Now they'll be moving in a small group, socially distant, in staggered times to get to those, to get to that next classroom. So it'll look a little bit different than the chaos that is the, the bell schedule normally. Will sixth graders remain in their home classroom for the duration of their school day? Or will they need to go to different classrooms for their different subject matters? Yeah, as that basically kind of what I just answered there, same thing with sixth grade. They'll move together as a cohort. The sixth grade classes are about three feet apart. So they're, they'll have very little movement to get from class to class. Sixth grade will be a rather easy, easy transition from class to class. Next question, thank you for all this great info. Is it possible for the teachers to send us supply list so we can purchase items our kids need for school? Anybody, anybody else?
I can take that, yes, the Toro staff and I have talked about at different grade levels. We've talked about the need for doubling up on what the supplies are so that the kids have what they need at home and also in their desk at school. So we will bring, I will bring that to the team on Friday at our next meeting where we discuss the reopening process. So it'll be coming out soon.
We're working on that at Washington as well.
Yeah, same for us. I'll, we'll have our teachers let you know if there's any additional supplies that they'll need for in-person return for sixth through eighth. Okay, next one, I have a daughter in TK in fourth and now the start times are the same. Can my daughter? Can my TK arrive late since it's the same time as the fourth grade start?
We can, we'll figure it out. It's all still logistics and, and making sure everything happens. But we will, we will definitely figure it out.
We can coordinate that between the sites for sure.
Okay. The next one is, can you clarify the Zoom times for remote learning kids? I don't, I'm not sure what grade level that's for. I'll just clarify for us, it's concurrent, it's the same time as the in-person, the in-person cohort in six through eight, so it'll be from eight thirty to 12 through six, for sixth through eighth grade.
And then at the fourth and fifth grade, it would take place after the teacher lunch in the afternoon for that block of time.
And that's the same for Toro as well. Unless you're TK or Kendra, then it could be from the dismissal time of 11:45 to 12:20 also.
Okay. My daughter's in fourth grade, if her classmate tests positive for COVID, does this mean that her and her entire cohort have to stay home and quarantine for 14 days? If all the students are supposed to be wearing masks at all times in campus, why would they have to quarantine since the change of exposure is minimal assuming all of the students were wearing masks?
So I can take that one. You know, I, I understand that question and the, and the rationale behind it, but we are gonna follow our, our health department guidelines. And right now for school guidance, if a student in a cohort tests positive, even with all the PPE, the recommendation is to quarantine the entire cohort. And so we're gonna follow those guidelines and we want everybody to remain safe.
Okay, thank you. On the days they are not at school, will they continue with their Zoom schedule similar to what they have now? I know this is one of my parents. And, and yes, that, that fits in at San Benicio, six through eight. They, they will continue with what they have. So they will be on Zoom at their same times from eight thirty to 12 o'clock and they will be getting the same Zoom that the students are getting in the classroom. Is there any chance for seventh and eighth graders to play sports this year? Highly, highly, highly unlikely. I, our league has not tossed around that idea. And, and sports at this point for our league is, is probably not gonna happen. It's unfortunate, I'm a big supporter of sports and athletics and it's really too bad that it's, it's not gonna work this year. How on board are the teachers feeling to do both virtual and in-person teaching? This seems like one will have more focus than the other. I don't know. How? The, the teachers are on board. I mean, I think the short answer is the teachers are on board for a return and, and they want to make the, the transition as smooth as possible. So working through those students and making sure that they and, and the, the fact of the matter is, there's probably gonna be more students on Zoom than there is in person based on some of the number returns I'm seeing at six through eight. So, you know, we're gonna be looking at that and making sure we find a way to balance both of them. Anybody else have anything to add for that? No?
No, you got it.
Okay. For clarification, does PPE costs include PPE being provided to children, mask and lanyards and staff masks and shields who will be on campus?
Yes, it does, absolutely.
Yes, definitely. This may have been stated and I missed it, how soon will we know if our child is in the A group or the B group?
That is depend, I'll let you guys, if, if anybody has anything different. But right now, it depends on when we get all of those surveys back and all the principals will take a look at their class loads to make sure it's balanced. Everything is based on where they're currently placed. So we're gonna take our current class lists. Then if there's any changes based on your preferences in your learning group, if you started the year stating that you wanted hybrid, but now you have decided that you want your child to stay in distance learning, then that would likely result in a change in, in class placement. So the principals are gonna have to review all of that survey data, build those, rebuild those schedules as needed and then get that information out. Hopefully, you know, we'll be done with that by early next week. But, but it's gonna take a little bit of, of organization and, and just sort of sifting through what those changes are gonna result in.
Okay. Few more questions here, will children constantly be reprimanded if they take off mask or need to step out of the classroom to get a break from the mask? I mean, I think that reprimanded isn't, isn't the right word, I guess, but isn't, isn't the word I would use. But it's gonna be an educational type of thing. We are gonna try and, and we are going, we have to legally keep our masks on at all times. So it's gonna be education. I know these are our children that we're dealing with here too. So there has to be education involved in this process and we're gonna, we're gonna do our best to educate our students. So I think that we, we will do our best to, to keep that on there and, and make sure we're being educated, educating the kids with it.
And we'll work, we'll work with families. We know that, you know, this is gonna be new to these kids, to some kids, a lot of it is gonna be very new. So, you know, we're gonna work with them and try to educate them. Obviously, we can't have kids in class without a mask. And if kids are not wanting to wear their mask, it'll be a, probably a family discussion between the parent and the teacher to figure out how to, to resolve that situation. But, but we'll work with you.
Okay. The next question is the goal to have teachers with the, with the first vaccination shot?
Yes, absolutely. I mean, we, we know that March 3rd, we've got appointments that are gonna start being made available. We have a couple of volunteers who have reached out to us that are gonna be monitoring the sites so that we can hopefully get people signed up quickly. But, you know, obviously, the goal is to get everybody vaccinated as quickly as possible.
Okay, next question, why will distance learning kids have to wait for Zooms with dedicated remote learning teachers for all grades? I, I think, I think maybe we need to clarify that one.
Yeah.
I, I don't, they, they won't be waiting, right? So kids that are in those online Zoom classes with that teacher are gonna have a separate schedule, am I right, Whitney and Krista?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, so the, the online, the distance-only students will have a schedule with their teacher throughout the day that will begin in the morning and look very similar to what is happening now. But our students who are at-home learners, because their cohort is not in school or their group is not in the school, will have a later start in their time.
Yes, so when I answered the question the first time, I, maybe I didn't understand that it was in reference to the kids who are full-time distance learners. Those students will be, in essence, business as usual as to what we're doing now.
Okay, great. Last three, two questions here. Will kids remain in schools once open even if the tiers return to purple? Yes, current guidance says yes. Schools can remain open even if we return to purple. And, and our Zoom account, we really apologize. We did not expect the huge turnout we got, and I'm glad that our, our district is involved and wants to be part of this. And I, we really apologize, but we will have this recording on YouTube. I will get it up there right when we're done here. So everybody can, can get the information in a timely fashion.
And, yeah. Just really quick, because this is recorded, we'll have this online. So if you are one of the people who did not get in and you're listening to the recording on YouTube, following the meeting, please let us know if you have any additional questions, and we will try to answer everything as it comes in and make sure that everybody has those answers.
Okay, last question before we break. Are sixth graders allowed to bring a computer back and forth or must, or do they have to use a Chromebook that stays at school? No, they can use a computer that comes back and forth, so that's not a problem.
All right, well, I just wanna thank everyone so much. I appreciate you being here. We are sorry that, that we had to, that some people got locked out. Again, we're thrilled that so many people wanted to attend and get the information. We'll continue to get the information out as we continue to prepare for reopening. And, and like I said, everything has been recorded and it will be on YouTube. So thank you all, have a wonderful evening, and we will see you soon.